Okay, we're live now, we're good to go.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is seven oh three. On Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four, I now call to order the two thousand one hundred and forty third regular meeting of the City of College Place City Council. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Councilmember Jessa?
Present.
Councilmember Espinosa?
Present.
Councilmember Peterson?
Present.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Sherman?
Present.
Councilmember Boyle?
Present.
And Councilmember Cleveland has asked to be excused today. We do have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. Will you all please join me for the pledge of allegiance? All right, so it's now time for public comment. Athan, did anyone submit a written comment in advance or request to speak via telephone or virtually?
No, they did not, and we have no public attendees.
Okay, and we have no one in council chambers aside from employees. So I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, which consists of agenda for tonight, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four, the council minutes from July twenty third, two thousand and twenty four, May financials, June financials, and excusing the absence of Councilmember Cleveland. Are there any items, any council member would like removed from the consent agenda at this time?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Councilmember Williams.
Perfect, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it and the motion is passed. Want to recognize DeSherry for getting us all caught up on our financials. She did an amazing job in getting us there just on time for us to get notified that it's time for the audit again. But she put a lot of work into that, so I do want to recognize and thank her for her hard work on that. All right, we have one presentation on the agenda tonight, and Ms. Colwell is going to present on the election season dos and don'ts.
Green button, thank you. All right, I threw this together today, so let's see. Hmm, it's not very big, but we'll talk about it. Okay, so I had a council member approach me and ask for some guidelines on how, I'm not going to disclose to you, guidelines on what can and can't be done by city council members, and I've also thrown in staff here as well, so you can have some information about what's expected of our staff. So what we're talking about is political speech. The button council member Williams is wearing is a political speech, so it's not just making a statement, it's also actions. It's the most protected right to free speech is political speech. But there is some constraints on that, and Washington state law prohibits public funds, public assets, so city funds, city assets from being used for political purposes. There are a few exceptions. So basically what this means to you is you can't use any city assets to campaign on behalf of a political candidate, you can't use any city assets to oppose or support local propositions. But, or state, but we're going to talk about what you can do. So here's the RCW, if you want to look at it. That applies. So you can't hold a rally here. You can't send an email using your city work email, telling people who to vote for, or who you support. You can't hold a rally inside City Hall. Can't use a copier, can't use a mailing posting. Pretty easy peasy. So what can you do? You can do something. So you can talk about politics. You can wear a button supporting one particular candidate, so long as it doesn't disrupt what you're doing, what your cohorts are doing. You can't fundraise, solicit volunteering, or disseminate part, oh, you can't tell people who to vote for. This includes activities outside of normal work hours, so if you're serving on a committee or commission as a city council member, don't use whatever assets you're using of the cities to do any campaigning. It also includes, like I said, outside business hours, but also not just at City Hall. All right, so what can you do? You as a board, as a, as a group, can take action to support or oppose a candidate or a ballot measure. It just has to be advertised in a public meeting, and you have to provide opportunity for both the opponent and proponent to have an opportunity. So with what's happening now in it with the city, if someone wanted to make a motion and have council consider voting on a statement in support of build funding and building a new police building, that can be done. Get it on the agenda, have it be a public open meeting, and talk about it. And if there's people here who want to say yes, they get to say yes. People here want to say no, they get to say no, and then it's the vote. You can ask questions, you guys. If you want. At an open press conference, so if you, if you call press conference, anyone's allowed to be there. You can say what you think, or if someone asks you, should I vote for the city police building to be built? You can answer that question. You can tell them why it's on the ballot. We have this building that is not serving, not fulfilling the needs, not serving the purpose of providing safety and security to the public. Make sense? All right, we don't take it all away, get to wear buttons. You can campaign all you want on your own time, just not on city dime. You can write letters to the editor, you can identify yourself as a council member. I can identify myself as city staff. But I can't say the city's position is A. I have to say it's my position. So what happens if you violate this? It can void the election results, you can get a civil penalty, it's the state. It's a state agency that governs this. If you do use public assets, you can be fined at, at least the value of those public assets, so even more. Criminal prosecution, theft, fraud. And then denial of indemnification, so that would be if acts or enactions that you do on behalf of the city. If someone sues you for that, the city is going to defend you. If you violate this law, we're not going to defend you. All right, any questions so far? Yes, go ahead. I don't know if I can go back. Can I go back? Well, I can go back. Yeah.
I have seen, I think, letters to the editor where they, a person will identify themselves as a council member. Not out of College Place necessarily, but, but that was different than the example you gave of yourself, isn't it? Is that true?
Yes, so it's the same. You can say, I am a council member, I serve on the board of City College Place. I'm going to vote yes for the funding for the police building, and here's why. You can't say, I'm Lauren Peterson, I'm on the board, and the city says vote.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
But in your example, you said you, you would say you were in it.
I could say I was a city employee.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll tell you, I plan on writing a letter to the editor and telling them from my point of view, even though I'm a walla walla, and say, look, these guys are doing a great job, this is what I do for the city. If I lived in the city, I'd vote for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if the city, if the council voted to support the the police station, then would we also mention that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Definitely. It's a matter of public record, and, and I mean, if anyone did any research, I mean, I could say in my letter to the editor, when this came before council, it was unanimous vote to put on the ballot. I mean, people can kind of read between the lines that it's supported by council, but you can do that. Yeah. In the information that I gave to you, this is put out by the PDC, Public Disclosure Commission, there's specific section for council, local council members, and what you can and can't do in here. So if you have any questions, refer to that. You can call them if you don't want to talk to me. You want to talk to someone else about your political views, you can call them and ask. Any questions, concerns? No, yeah.
Right now with social media, a lot of people use it as a platform to express their opinions, so on and so forth. What are the guidelines to do that? Because many people like to argue or you know, say I support this, I don't support that, and then they take it to public forums, and then they put it out in, in public view.
Yep.
What is a code of conduct there?
Well, I kind of looked into this. Do we have a social media policy in our personal home, but yes, we do, which I did not look up, which I could for you, but that's for staff members. You guys specifically don't have a code of ethics, something maybe to consider. And then that's something that we could work into that sort of policy, but as an individual, you, it, what's on social media is the same thing that you can step outside and say on your private time. You get to say what you, what you want.
Same guidelines though, as what you just mentioned.
Yep, same guidelines. So you can't use the city seal on, as your avatar of social media and present it like you're the city and you're making this argument. That would not work, that would violate the law. But you as a person, you as a private business owner, you as a church member, you can have at it. Yeah. Yeah.
And this may be more for staff. Way back when we first started having, putting stuff on Facebook, we were actually doing it through one of the staff's account. And until she logged into her personal account and then managed the City of College Place page. I feel like that makes it really muddy. Do we still do that?
No, I, we have our own YouTube, Instagram, TikTok, Facebook, no TikTok, Facebook.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to check, because.
So yes, that's not that we've separated that, that line.
Yep.
So we will be telling our staff members, like chief of police, you can indicate, you can talk to people about, as the chief, as council members, about the need that our officers have. You know, we have, we're going to have, how many officers now? Like eighteen or something? And here's, the break room is literally, you know, four hundred square feet. You can talk about things like that. All right, any questions?
But what could, okay, let's, let's say I was, I'm the chief of police.
Yes.
And I'm at, I don't know, a public event. As you say, it's a public event. I'm in uniform. So it's clear who I am, but it's a public event, not necessarily help, let, let's.
Make it messy.
Any, any, right?
Messy.
And I say something about, you know, I want you to support giving voting yes so that I could have a police department.
So that wouldn't be appropriate. What would be appropriate is, here are the facts. We have this many officers, here's how old the building is. We don't have a place to interview suspects, we, da, 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 da. Here is why the city needs a new police building.
And here's how much it would cost.
Here's how much it would cost, right?
Okay, so just reasoning behind everything, but not my, not my trying to influence them into making a decision.
Right, or not telling them.
Telling them.
Not telling them, right. You know, we're, we're losing, we're losing candidates to other jurisdictions that have nicer facilities, you know?
Yeah. So as mayor, now, let's say I wanted, I'm at an event, the topic comes up of, oh, I, you know, I, the police station. Same thing, I should just talk about why it's needed and not why, not that, and I think you should vote for it kind of comment?
Yep, just why it's needed. Yep.
Okay.
If you're serving as mayor.
Right, yeah, so I'm there at an event and I have this on.
Yep. And you can say, take it off. Here I am as a College Place resident. This is who, this is why I'm voting yes and why. You can do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This isn't really a question parade, but I would like to ask the mayor to put, whether or not the city council wants to take a position on supporting the police station on an upcoming agenda.
So there's, there is kind of a fine line, though. You could, you could, you know, I think there was an old cop show, Just the Facts, ma'am, or something like that, and that's, that's what you're saying, right? And I can't remember which one that was, but anyway. But on that, but having said that, you could always make a comment at the end, I would appreciate your support. Too far?
I would say, no, I would say we would appreciate your vote. We would appreciate your consideration of the issues. So.
And that's okay to say as a mayor?
Yes.
Not as a personal, as a private citizen, excuse me.
Yep, and if you look through the information that I provided you, which is a lot, but you know, it's pretty quick and easy to get to. So the PDC has looked at a lot of activities, so they look at, is it normal and regular conduct? So are you going to an event that you always go to? And you're having a discussion about the needs of the police department? Normal and usual, right? If you tell the mayor, I'm hitting every public meeting this campaign because we're going to get that passed, they're going to look at that and say, eh, that might not be, that would, that would tick the box that it might be prohibited. The timing, the tone, the tenor. Yeah.
Does that, is that seen as campaigning, so to say?
Is what seen as campaigning?
That suddenly you're going to all these events?
That, if that's why you're doing it, yes, yes, yeah. You guys are going to do fine, I have no doubt in my mind.
Well, I see it here, I was thinking, you know, it might be nice to have like a video tour of the office that we put up on our YouTube channel, but I see here that you're, if it's in the ordinary course of business that you took those pictures, that's fine, but if you stage them for the campaign, then that's not okay.
That's not okay, although I think we've already probably captured all that information now. You know, the presentation from the chief. I mean, that absolutely could go up on our website as, these are the facts affecting the situation.
Yep.
Bless you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Feel free to email me, call me, call the PDC if you're like, I don't know.
I know, I feel like I got to.
Don't rat each other out, I don't want to know.
They'll tell you everything. All right.
You're good?
Thank you so very much, appreciate it.
Oh, and by the way, little prezzy at the bottom, just FYI. I took the memo I wrote you, went online, put it into this AI thing, and it gave me this in like two minutes. I changed like two slides.
You weren't supposed to say that, we all figured.
I know, my husband said, tell them.
That's really cool.
Well, that's clever.
I'm sure like.
That's a good use of public funds by, by, by using your resources wisely.
I could, I could take the prezzy off, but seven dollars a month, so I don't.
We can't afford that.
All right, thank you so very much. Keeps us on our toes, makes us think about what we're talking about and how we're doing it. And then, yeah, brings up the topic of how we're going to support. Okay. Moving on, no public hearings. So we're all the way to action items already. So there's three action items on the agenda tonight. First is a salary ordinance, update number four, and Ms. Dohring's going to report on that.
Going to bring up the redline version. Just a quick change, when we added the senior planner to the salary ordinance, I did it quick while I was on vacation and apparently didn't think about it a whole lot. Sorry, anyway, it needed to be up in the exempt section, not in the non-exempt, so that's the only change. Well, that's not the only change, there's another change. We also changed. This was kind of on the agenda to change, but we were waiting, and we don't want to change or do a whole new salary ordinance just for this, but we're going to remove applicator off of the street worker, streets worker three. That's in the job description, and we want, wanted those titles to be more consistent. So those are the two changes. Can answer any questions?
Any questions, Councilmember Jessa? Nothing? Espinosa? Peterson? Williams?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Sherman, do you have a question or comment?
Am I missing the redline version?
I mean, it's.
It's just labeled as that, but it looks exactly the same.
Okay.
Oops.
It's not showing up on.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we understand, thank you for explaining the differences, thank you so much.
Be the one of them are, use your imagination.
Okay, I'll just write it on my screen and.
Two changes.
Thank you.
And Ms. Boyle, any questions or comments?
No questions, thanks, Sean.
I have a question, and it's not so much regarding, well, it is kind of regarding this, but what? What's the process that requires you to come before council every time you want to make a change to a job description or salary ordinance?
The salary ordinance, you guys are in charge of the salaries, so we have to come in every time we change it. It has to come, it's, we have to update the ordinance. And so that has to come before council. Job descriptions, sometimes I throw them in there because there's, we're, it's, you know, going along with the ordinance if we're adding a position. Mike likes you guys to approve them, but I mean, they don't always make it to you. I mean, sometimes there's small changes that it just seems silly.
Right.
You know?
Well, you know, my whole thought is I'd like to give you guys a little bit more empowerment to, you know, run your departments and not have to come to council every time or wait for council every time to make a decision.
So salary, salary has to be done by ordinance. I don't believe job descriptions are required for that, just, I, I don't think they do.
Okay.
But definitely the salary ordinance.
Okay, because I, yeah, I, I just think it would, you know, I'd like to give you guys a little bit more, so I think it would be appropriate for us to start considering a department heads to kind of look at what it is that they're coming to us for and what things we have to do, or what things we could start really letting go of and not have to take that complete control. And that department heads be the leaders that they're hired to be, and not have to come to us for every little thing, so kind of I think we should start looking at that.
Noted, I like it.
Please.
Because this makes me really nervous.
I know, I know, you know, it's, it's like, I think we gotta, you know, let you all be, be who you are, or what we hired you to be, and not feel like you always have to wait for council to approve it, or you know. I always feel bad when you guys feel like you have to justify what you need from us. And you shouldn't have to feel, be doing that. All right, if there's no questions or comments, do we have a motion on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty four dash zero one zero as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it and the motion is passed. Thank you, appreciate it. Next is Mr. McAndrew is going to present on the Majonia Road right-of-way acquisition.
Thank you, Mayor. And we've talked about Majonia Road project many times, so I think you're all pretty aware of it. As we are moving forward with this process, we are in the right-of-way acquisition phase. And so we're at the point where our consultants and appraisers have been working on putting values together for the right-of-way that we have to acquire. And we will begin, hopefully we'll begin starting to make offers and start acquiring some right-of-way. So timely with your comment just a few minutes ago, Mayor. This whole resolution is intended to authorize the city administrator to make those offers rather than having to come to you, to council with each and every offer, and then make the offer, present it. If there's a counter, come back to council. It can be very timely, take a lot of effort and resources, so.
Very inefficient way to run.
Not, not very efficient, so at this point, we're recommending the adoption of the resolution authorizing the city administrator to make offers to the property owners along Majonia Road for right-of-way acquisition.
All right, thank you. I'm going to pop over the other direction. Councilmember Boyle, any questions or comments?
I don't think so, I think I'm good, thanks.
Councilmember Sherman?
No questions.
Councilmember Williams?
I want to make sure that this actually allows the city administrator to negotiate. So should it be something like make offers and negotiate? Or should it say authorizing the city administrator to negotiate purchase?
Yeah, I think if you add on make offers and negotiate, I, or just to negotiate. Yeah.
Okay.
I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Well, there's making, there's negotiations, but then it's the authority to make an offer, though, isn't that, I might, correct? I mean, you have discussions with people along the way.
Yeah, you're right.
And then they say this, and then, within it's the power to then say we accept that. So to just chime in, so typically, I should have gone over a little bit how this process typically works, so our right-of-way consultants have hired appraisers who will come back to the city and say, this piece of right-of-way is appraised at X dollars for various reasons. You know, there's a high-value tree, there's a fence that has to be relocated, any number of things, and so they'll say it's worth nine thousand dollars, or it's worth twenty thousand dollars, or whatever it is. And so the, the way that process typically works is we will review that, make sure it all looks accurate, there's nothing that's missed. And then the city would make that offer based on the actual appraiser appraisal to the property owner. So then where negotiations typically would come in is if that property owner said, I don't think this accounted for my high-value tree, or my rose bushes that my grandma planted, or whatever it might be, and we think it's worth this much more. And so it's, it's not necessarily negotiations in the sense of like buying a car, for instance, or something like that. I think we are bound, we could probably speak to this a little bit better maybe, but I think we're bound to pretty close to what the actual appraisal is. And so it's not like, the appraisal could come in at ten grand, then Mike would be able to say, oh, we'll go ahead and give you twenty. I mean, that's extreme, but does that make sense? Does that sort of address your? Yeah, it does, I, but on the other hand, we've had discussions here in the recent past about, you know, there can be other negotiations that can occur. So and offers made. So I don't know, is this a carve-out, where this is very specific to this activity? As far as making, negotiating and making offers? Or is this setting a precedent for the future? What do you, what would you say?
When you say we're bound to pretty close to the appraised, bound by what? By Washington state law, by?
So if, are you looking, so the actual resolution authorizes city administrator So if, are you looking, so the, um, actual resolution authorizes the city administrator. To give administrative offers for the properties adjacent to Majonia Road for right-of-way acquisition. Subsequent to prices established by Universal Field Services is the resolution.
And, and I understand how this works. I think it was when they did college, I mean, there were, you could have seven hundred of these, right? Yeah, exactly. And that's why we were trying to capture it into. Right. Authorizing, uh, uh, him to make the, the offers and then what. What can happen is if he made that, you know, the appraisal comes in at ten thousand dollars and he makes that offer. And the property owner comes back with it, with a counter, Universal Field Services kind of does that negotiating for us. And they would come back to the city and say. They want eleven thousand. And if we had to wait till we went back to council, it might be two weeks, three weeks. Um, and so, and then sometimes people get cold feet then or change their mind. And so this is really designed to keep things moving.
And that's why I wanted to make sure that he could respond to the counters and.
That is the intent.
So Michael, he has support obviously for the, the new amount, cause you would want that obviously, instead of being. Yes. Second guest for every, yeah.
Correct.
Negotiation.
Convince Universal Field Services.
Yeah, right, okay, okay.
Yeah, Universal Field Services would come back and say. They want this much and that makes sense, or it's within the, and I honestly don't know the number, the percentage. I think there's a percentage that you're allowed to, to offer. Above and beyond, Reed, you know?
I should know the answer to this, cause we just talked about it. Um, I think it's five percent, but then even above the appraised value. Um, there are, um, different valuations. That make something valuable to the city. So, um, one option would be to put a five percent or ten percent. Authority above whatever our appraisal says.
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean. Percentages get weird, cause somebody wants fifty bucks more, you know, but it's, it's five percent, or I don't know. So now we got about fifty, you know. So I, yeah, I think, um, yeah, um. If it's going through a second party before Mike, I think that's, for me anyway, that's good enough. There's a second set of eyes will look at it and it's not just, um. He, he, Mike could not be, you know, in the future, well, I think that's your cousin, you know, or, or, yeah. So the, the, this type of conversation that can happen, so, yeah, perfect.
Councilmember Espinoza?
Yeah, so for me, I think it's, it's good to allow the, uh, city administrator to streamline the process and make those decisions. What I am uneasy about is not putting a cap, uh, like a percentage number to allow them to negotiate with them. So I would feel more comfortable in putting in, in the verbiage, a five, ten percent to negotiate with. And if. Some owners have unrealistic expectations, they want twenty, thirty percent above, um, market value. Bring those here and then, or to the agency that you guys are utilizing and then let's have a second look. So that we can be good stewards of the resources, uh, that we're using and not go overboard and overpay for something. Um, when the variables get out of, out of our control.
Well, it's a, it definitely. Right now, the way, so if we want to give the city administrator a little bit more, um, buying power, so to say, for lack of better words. We would say, okay, he could go up to, I'm just making up a number, ten percent above what. Um, what's the company's name?
Uh, Universal Field.
Universal Fields estimate. Um, anything, you know, so you can go up to anything more than that, then would have to come to council. If somebody was saying, well, no, I want forty percent more than what your offer was.
And, and what we can do is, is I think the, um, resolution and motion is appropriate. And then we can say, we're taking direction from staff on what you want us to do. And so anything above and beyond that ten percent will come back to you.
Did, did that answer, address your concern, Councilmember?
It does, it does. Like if we can put some, put that in, in, uh, in the motion somehow, that would be good.
Yeah, and I don't even think it needs to be in the motion. It can just be direction to staff.
I, I think so. This is something, I, I, I appreciate your comments. However, um, this is like when we have the ten percent add-on for construction. And I've asked the question over and over again, is it amazing how, how many times it's ten percent over? If I know that it's ten percent over on those bids, every time they come to me with a bid, I'd talk to Mike and say, I want ten percent more. And I think that's. Uh, why wouldn't you? He's got the discretion to approve it. So that I, you know, um.
So it'll just be instructions. We can do it with instructions. Okay. Anything else, Councilmember Espinoza?
That's all for me.
That's all, okay.
I have one, but I think Councilmember Williams.
Oh, Councilmember Williams?
Councilmember Peterson addressed my concern. I didn't think that should be in the motion for exactly that reason.
Um, if I remember correctly, I know it's been a long process. I mean, we have a general estimation as to why we came up with the six twenty-one ninety-one number in the first place. So there's a general idea of how much these things are appraised for in such anyways. I, I think it's great that, I think the federal is covering two twenty out of that six twenty-one or something of that nature. Uh, and then they also put in there that, you know, anything over, past a certain deadline, we're, you know. So we, we want to streamline the process, so we don't pass that deadline for one. Um, I, I had two quick questions. Uh, this is, you know, naively optimistic, but if we go under that number. Where, where does that money go? Where can it go?
I believe that federal portion covers the first two hundred and twenty thousand. It's my understanding of that. And so, um, if we finalized all this and we're at six hundred thousand. I, it's my understanding, we would still get the full federal dollars.
Sure, and then, okay, so what, what you just said, we had twenty-one left over. Where does that twenty-one go? Or where can it go? Can it go back towards this project somehow? I mean, again.
For construction costs. It's, it would still be allocated towards the project, so. Budgeted for projects, who would just use it for a different phase.
And then the same thing for anything that, you know, cross our fingers goes over. Hopefully, we intend not to, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
Think we just wanna make sure that the city administrator, um, doesn't spend it on fireworks.
We'll let him know.
Cause we know how much he loves his fireworks. Alright, any other questions or comments regarding this? A very good discussion, you all appreciate it. Um, if there's no further questions or comments, do we have a motion for this resolution?
Councilmember Williams, I, uh, move that we approve resolution twenty-four dash zero five nine. Approving right-of-way purchases on Majonia Road and authorizing the city administrator to make offers and negotiate. Also, yeah.
Wonderful. We have a first and a second. Any other discussion, other comments? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the ayes have it and the motion's passed. Thank you, Robert. Appreciate that. Thank you, Reeve, helping us get those questions addressed. Alright, next is Ms. Colwell is going to present the assumption of private infrastructure code update.
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I presented at the last city council for a need to update our, uh, assumption. City assumption of private code inference, infrastructure. Get it right. Um. That one. Um, we, in the recent past, went through assuming a private infrastructure. And throughout the process, we just, um, found some things were a little less clear. We wanted to make sure that the city was protected in being able to recoup any assets or recoup any expenditures. That should go to the property owners, um, make sure we make that an a- analysis to include staff time and staff resources. Um, and just kind of streamline it. Um, Public Works Director. McAndrews has reviewed it and given the thumbs up. Our, uh, Finance Director has reviewed it as well and given it the thumbs up. And so the recommendation is to just pass this update so that we can take care of this. We think that there will be some petitioning the city down the road to assume some infrastructure.
Okay, so is, is this addressing all the issues? Well, the ones we discussed regarding the villages at Garrison Creek and all the water districts, is that what this is? Remind me, is that what this is?
In anticipation that we will have some of the water districts or privately owned water systems being petitioned to come in.
That's right, okay. I just need a quick reminder, thank you. I, I read what it said, but I just wanted to make sure I remembered, but it's.
Yep, yep.
Alright, Councilmember Jessup, questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Espinoza?
No questions.
Councilmember Peterson?
No questions.
Councilmember Williams?
Uh, no questions. I think this is really important.
Councilmember Sherman?
No questions.
And Councilmember Boyle?
No questions. Thank you for having things prepared ahead of time.
Yes, thank you. Okay, um, so let's get moving on this. So do we have a motion for this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash oh one one and ordinance. An ordinance by the city council of the City of College Place, Washington, to repeal. College Place Municipal Code, Chapter three point two two, Assumption of Private Infrastructure. And enact new Chapter three point two two, providing for city assumption of private infrastructure.
I'll second. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the ayes have it and the motion is passed. Thank you so much for your work on this. Another one of those things that was just kind of the don't like you when it comes up.
I did a good job of listening to all the participants throughout the last process, and so.
You did. Thank you. Okay, let's, um, there is no administrative reports. There's one informational report in your packet tonight. There is no executive session, so we're down to closing items. Is there any other business for go to the order? Alright, hearing none, do we have a motion to conclude?
So move, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Peterson.
Gosh, everybody's packed up. No one's ready to make a motion.
I feel like I always.
Alright, so there's no objection. The meeting has concluded at seven forty-four PM. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.